For February 18th, let the record show that all numbers are present with the exception of meetings. Can I give a second?
Right.
Second by Alabama and stage, all is in favor?
Aye.
Post, carry, new referrals for consideration to authorize the mayor letter into an agreement with Henningson Durham and Richardson Architecture and Engineering PC for professional services related to the levy reaccrediting, reaccrediting the amount of $132,166.28. Mayor?
We was last talked about this with questions, so we had a firm here on Zoom meeting so that the council can get their questions answered.
Can I have a little, can you hear me?
Yes.
So I'm Kim Lucas with HDR and I have Dave Moore and Vicky Torjaklo here with me. I am happy to share my screen, we have a brief presentation that kind of covers some of the questions that we received from you about levy accreditation. So I can start with that, if that works for everybody?
Yep.
Great. Let's see. See if I can do this. Share. Okay. So thank you again for letting us meet with you and hopefully answer any questions that you guys have. Feel free to interrupt along the way if you have any questions as we're going through. So this is just a quick overview of the different stakeholders in owning a levy. We have the city of Olean as the local sponsor, day-to-day responsibilities are primarily O and M, operating the flood warning system and just making sure that the levy is functioning as it was intended to. We also have New York State DEC, they will help participate in the different inspections of this levy system. They also coordinate between the Corps and the local sponsor, which is Olean. And as we discussed the other day, DEC is currently remapping the flood planes, which will have an impact in the Olean area. We also have the Army Corps of Engineers, they were originally authorized to design and construct this levy system back in the Federal Flood Control Act of 1946, I believe. And since then, they've been participating in the annual periodic inspection system as well. And what comes out of those inspections is they assign a levy reading and that ties to the eligibility of this levy under public law 8499, which is the regulation that lets you receive funding if your levy is damaged during a flood event. So as long as you're meeting certain criteria that the Corps maintains, you can receive funding to help repair your levy. And last but not least, we have FEMA, so they provide the actual mapping for the flood insurance areas. And that's all done in accordance with the Code of Federal Regulations 6510, and I'll go into that a little bit more later. So just highlighting some of the main benefits of proceeding with this study, it really comes down to responsible ownership of your levy. And I have a slide later on that is a screenshot from the National Levy Database, which indicates that this one, at least one of the segments within the city of Olean's levy system is considered high risk. You have a lot of people and buildings and property value within the levied area, so it's important to maintain that levy so that it's meeting those objectives. Of course, it is always beneficial to meet the regulatory criteria that the state has. And as I mentioned before, the disaster relief funding that the Corps maintains under public law 8499. And of course, it's beneficial to help lower the flood insurance burden on the homeowners and property owners that are in the levied area. And that, you know, helps encourage development and helps encourage folks to kind of stay put if they're not paying a ton of money in flood insurance. So as I mentioned, this is just a screenshot from the National Levy Database, so when the Corps lasted their risk screening for this system, it was considered to be a high-risk levy. And that's kind of driven by multiple factors, including the perform, the condition of the levy and what's within the levied area as well. Just digging in a little bit more into what FEMA's role is, so the process for levy accreditation. And no matter what happens to FEMA, that regulation still applies unless, unless Congress changes it. So it quite literally takes an act of Congress to modify or change or remove that regulation. Well, yeah.
Excuse me.
So the, this, this regulation references the Army Corps of Design criteria, so that's essentially what we would be looking at for when we're going through the accreditation process to make sure that the levy is meeting that criteria. FEMA also is responsible for updating the flood insurance maps to designate the special flood hazard areas, which are those that are behind the accredited levies. Also, a couple of points about flood insurance, so while FEMA does delineate the flood insurance zones, they do not issue or administer the actual flood insurance policies. That's usually done by right your own companies or other private firms that have an agreement to work under the Federal Insurance Administration, which is a different entity from FEMA altogether. I also wanted to note that the National Flood Insurance Program is due to be reauthorized by March 14th, so less than a month. And I'm happy to share this presentation with you, and I'll include a link to if FEMA is, or I'm sorry, if the NFIP isn't reauthorized by that date, just for your awareness. And, you know, there are a lot of levy owners that are, you know, kind of in the same boat as you guys, and I think there's a lot of questions right now, so you're certainly not alone. And there are also a lot of professional organizations that are actively tracking these updates to the NFIP and what happens with FEMA. So I just listed two of those organizations that HDR is very involved in here. They have been, you know, tracking the, this, these changes very closely, and if it interests you, we can definitely get you plugged in with some of our contacts within these agencies to get some more information and insight into that. So just a quick recap of what is within the scope that we submitted. So this covers phase one of the overall levy accreditation process. So phase one is essentially collecting and reviewing data and information. So we would reach out to a bunch of different agencies like the Corps and FEMA and the city and DEC to get information about the levy system. And then our main deliverable under phase one is to prepare an engineering report. So this document will basically summarize, here's all the data that we collected and here are, you know, if there are any, we would acknowledge those data gaps where we need additional information in order to basically make the assessment for levy accreditation. So that kind of lets us have an opportunity to determine what the next step is, like what's the next phase. You know, I guess there is a chance that we get all the information that we need and there's nothing at all that needs to be done to the levy in order to get, to be certified, and then it's super easy. More likely than not, we'll probably need maybe more information or more, you know, geotechnical borings, I'm speculating here. And that's kind of the, the main purpose of completing this phase one, is that we know what the direction to go in is for the subsequent phase. So just a quick overview of our timeline. So as I said, our scope just includes phase one of the levy certification process, which is primarily data collection and review. And from that assessment, we can use that, those findings to determine what the next steps are and essentially to define what a schedule could be for getting the levy completely through the certification process. And so once it's certified, it's valid for 10 years. And, you know, typically, we'd encourage to have the levy recertened or in the hydrology of that area. So that's just a quick summary of our understanding of FEMA and flood insurance and our scope and what the main benefits are to completing this study. So I will stop talking and let you guys have an opportunity to ask us any questions that you may have.
So at the beginning, you had said that the reaccreditation, did you say was due March of this year?
So the National Flood Insurance Program has to be reauthorized every so often, and it's due for reauthorization in March. And Vicky, I'm not sure if you want to add anything else to that, what that could entail?
So the National Flood Insurance Program covers the process with respect to putting out the flood insurance rate maps and the designation of the special flood hazard areas. Kim is correct in the fact that it does need reauthorization to provide FEMA with the, with the next round of, of, of funding and, and specific requirements of what Congress expects of them with respect to the National Flood Insurance Program going forward. It's, it, it comes every so many years, it's a, it's a regular intended reauthorization to allow Congress the ability to provide additional requirements on what they expect FEMA to do as part of the National Flood Insurance Program.
So it's not specific to, like, our levy, it's really to all levies with the expectation?
Correct.
Okay, so is there something that-
It's program-wide.
Okay, but is there something we should have done by March of this year?
No, this is, this isn't a specific deadline for your levy or anyone else's levy, this is a specific deadline that Congress has to reauthorize the National Flood Insurance Program to, for FEMA to be able to continue that moving forward.
Thank you.
Thanks. I have two questions. The first one, in your presentation, you mentioned, or it was, it stated that you had 3,804 people that were affected by the levy. So my question is, how did you come up with that number considering Olean is roughly 13-8? And a lot of those, that 13-8, so we're saying-
But I believe these numbers are polled from the National Levy Database, so that's, that database is managed by the Corps. Certainly possible that there's some outdated information. I don't, Dave, if you want to add anything else to that, feel free.
Yeah, this is data taken from the National Levy Database. We didn't verify it, so that would be part of, part of the process is, you have to verify that, that type of information if you wanted. So they typically, I don't know, how they, how they garner that, they go to the top of levy and do an inundation, and then they have like a national structure inventory they use.
Okay, and then I had, I had a second question. What kind of brought this about and you guys coming to bring this presentation? I had jokingly talked about FEMA pretty much being eliminated with the current administration, but with insurance. I know out West, there were a lot of talk about homeowners having their insurance canceled because of the fires. So my question was, we pay to get this reaccreditation and to avoid higher costs with the flood insurance. Who's to say that insurance companies or flood insurance companies won't just cancel us or raise the prices to a point where this area can't afford it? Is there some type of guarantee in that with getting this reaccreditation?
Yeah, so I can, I can take a shot and let Vicky follow up, but yeah, I don't think there's any guarantee, obviously, that if, if you do this, that the rates will remain where they are now, or they'll be reduced, right, because you have the accredited levy. But, but because it is federally, you know, it's not like fire insurance, right, it's federally backed, the flood insurance currently. So if it remains federally backed, the rate should be fairly stable. They have recently got up to recognize a lot more flood losses. So there's a lot of different zone designations that are used, Vicky's, Vicky's in top of that, but there's really no guarantee. But really, if, if a mortgage company requires you to carry flood insurance, you're gonna have to find us somewhere and, you know, having it, it could be that having an accredited levy would help reduce that. I can't really say, because I'm not an underwriter, right, and I don't know how the insurance companies are gonna look at it, because it's federally backed, not many, not as many should exit the market because it's a stable market for them, they're not looking at huge losses. The risk to them as a, as an underwriter is less than other types of insurance, but I'm like, let Vicky follow up.
Yeah, similar to what Dave said, so the, the flood insurance that your, the residents would acquire would be available in the private market. And with regards to flood insurance, anyone purchasing a home that's within a flood zone, the federal government requires, any federally backed mortgages require the purchase of flood insurance to go with that home. So now FEMA, when it comes to their designation of what that flood, what those flood insurance costs are, they do have some new calculations related to the levy system, and they have levy data incorporated within that calculation. Ultimately, there's, there's actuarial risk that, that plays a part within the calculation of what those costs are. If you have any other questions, hopefully, hopefully these, these responses help to answer your questions.
All set, thank you.
Anything else? Thank you. Have you got anything else on that?
I'm sorry.
You got anything else on that?
I believe so, everybody else out there?
So this will be coming back up on, next week, though?
Yes. I mean, it's a pro, right, Tony?
Yeah. Yeah, I just didn't know if he had anything else before we-
If this goes through, then it would be out for-
Yes. Everybody got any other questions? So you just need a motion to go through and put this out for PL, correct?
I do have a quick question.
Yes.
This 132,000 for the leviate agreement, what fund is that coming from?
I speak on that. Capital Project 230.
Capital Project 230?
230 currently has a fund balance of 160,651.
Okay.
Brad, that, and then that was for phase one only.
Yeah.
Phase two would be any remediation, correct?
I think this one had four phases. So, but yes, the 132,000 or whatever is phase one. And then depending on the findings of phase one, is, you know, you would have to then get a quote for phase two, because it's, you know, variable based on what's defined in phase one.
And then does everybody, do you go through four phases, or two is like remediation, so if you don't have to, you can advance to four? It's kind of what the phases are, just depends on where you, what you get, and one is where you go in the next stage?
Right, correct.
Okay.
So depending on what they find in phase one, will determine how involved phase two is.
Okay.
And then obviously, if, if we don't need to do much of anything to the levies, if it meets the standards, then it would go right, right to certification and then reaccreditation.
Okay.
So if there's more to do, then it would, then you would secure contractor, basically phase three would be the construction phase.
Okay, learned.
So I just wanted to clarify, so let's say we complete phase one and there is nothing that we need to do for fixing anything. What are we looking, are we looking to pay again for the remaining phase or the final phase, or?
I believe, yes.
Is there an estimate on what that would be?
No, I, I don't have an estimate on that. I can ask number one.
Because my question is, I mean, if we're, we're 132,000, question becomes, how do you pay for it? It's like buying a car that you can't afford the maintenance on, so in my eyes.
Yeah. I, I also think that phase one opens up the opportunity, you have to know what's wrong in order to apply for grants.
Right.
Right? So is that where you're, where you're going with it?
Yeah, I mean, we're looking, yeah, we need to start looking at grants, if, if there's potential there for this to come, and, I mean, because when we first started talking about this, I seem to remember it being 120, 130,000, but that was the end of it. So in, in my eyes, my perception, that's what it costs for the whole thing. Now, we see that there's four phases and we're just paying for phase one, so like, okay, so what if we do have something where we need to remediate out there? Now we're talking about more money, but if we get lucky enough to where, okay, now we don't have to worry about anything, everything isn't inspected and, and we're good to go, then what are we looking at paying just to get that recertification, that, that phase four aspect? So that's what I'm-
Unfortunately, it just depends on what they find in phase one, so there's no way to-
Yeah.
Yeah, so in, in our, in our quote here, I think I sent this to you, I'll send it again. You can see there's, I was mistaken, there's five phases here, so phase one is an initial evaluation, who owns a levy, who's responsible for what, that type of stuff. Phase two is a needs assessment and recommendations. Phase three is design and permitting of selected improvements. Phase four would be construction, getting it up to standard, and then phase five is the accreditation and certification.
So we're hoping we just skip right to five?
Well, you would have to go one, one, two, if everything meets the standard, then you can go right to five. If you go one, two, and then you need, it needs work, then you gotta do three and four, and then that will get you to five.
But John is right, we, we have to do phase one so we know what we can apply for in grants.
Yeah, phase, phase one and two will tell you everything you need to know, and if your levy meets a standard or not, and then you can apply for grants because you'll know what you'll have to do.
And honestly, I don't think I'm super optimistic that, that our, our levies are just gonna be perfect. I thought, I heard one of them say that, you know, the standards for the levy system has increased or improved over, over the years. Is that your understanding, Brad? Did she say something like that? I thought-
I, I think it was something, say like that not come down the standards of it or something, we talked about-
I thought there, you know, what they said was something along the lines of, the FEMA standards have, have improved or increased, you know, over the years, and if our levy system was built back in the 70s? 50s, sorry.
1943 or something.
So it was initially built in the 50s and then it was topped again, I believe in 1980.
Okay. So you were born in the 50s.
Proactive, right? And so I think that this is money well spent for our residents to be proactive to see, because heaven forbid we end up with some flooding that we could have prevented by having our levies kind of shored up or what have you. So I, I would support this, we've been talking about it ever since I came on the council, you know, and I, I think it got shoved down a line because we, we didn't have a deadline, but I see this as more preventative in nature, and it's, you know, it's something that we keep preaching, so I, I think that we have to then take ownership of, of our wanting to be planful versus reactive and, and bite the bullet on this one, and we have the money set aside.
And with that, Brad, you know, there might not be a cost to the phase two, correct? That's them-
There will be.
Oh, there will be.
Yes. And I think I asked them what to expect for phase two, and it was somewhere in the 200,000 area.
Okay.
And I guess to add on to Sania's point, the direct impact to the residents is, without doing this, and we lose the accreditation, and most homeowners' insurance policies or mortgage backers are gonna require that everyone in Olean carry flood insurance. Possibly, is that?
Possibly.
Or it leaves a larger-
A larger group.
Area, a larger group, yeah.
And what happens if Fort Villan and Allegheny doesn't do this and their levies are failing? Does that affect us? Does this affect the study or something?
Well, at this time right now, it just, this is just us doing it. They've been approached, they should be doing something here too, so.
So I just wondered if there's, if their levy system failed, would it affect ours? Here, there's also, we're doing, you know, kind of, not in there.
Fort Villan was at the initial meeting. So Fort, Fort Villan will be doing the same process for Dodge Creek and Lea.
Anything else? Send just a, a motion to put it on for P. Send just a, a motion to put it out for P I next week?
Committee of the House?
Committee of the House, sorry.
Well, actually, resolution, right, this is for vote, right, isn't it, Tiffany?
If, if you can refer it for resol, approve for, for resolution or you can refer to committee of the House.
Okay, I'll motion refer for resolution, hey, second?
Second.
All of them in the call, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, okay? Nothing under, more under new business, under unfinished business, we have the North Union Street Lighting.
I sent you off some information about a week or so ago, and, uh, I had a Walter Klug, I guess is how you say it. Uh, he has a company, color-changing decorative streetlights. Magna Flood is proud to present our color-changing technology for decorative street lighting. So I called him up and, uh, I had a conversation, I explained our situation to him here. So on, uh, on, uh, March third, he will be coming to Oleen and take a look at the situation, what we, what we've done so far, and, uh, give us an idea what he can do for us.
Okay. Uh, Tiffany, then can you just schedule this for the First City Operations Committee after March third? September third, well, can you say March third?
March third, yeah.
I don't know what date that would be.
Monday, the third.
So it'd be the fourth?
The fourth.
Yeah, the committee's at night, right? Okay.
Okay, we, we meet the fourth?
You wanna go up to the, uh?
Well, I'm just thinking if he's gonna go back and if he's gotta do some figuring and stuff, I think I have answers for you, so.
If you need them.
And then under City Garage Soft Shed.
I have nothing new to report on that, I'm not sure what, uh, what was it, time for an update? Is that?
Yeah, so it would have just been update, do you?
Yeah, I don't.
Do we recall a specific reason, Tiffany?
I think it was to look at the plans, right, like what kind of closing plans there were.
To see what benefits were required.
We also talked about the close, I want to go over there, that with the soft shed, so I think that's, yeah, isn't that the update you wanted to?
Yeah, that, but Sonya's right, I was gonna bring something forward on that for shorting it up.
Yeah, he's, uh, he's been off on some vacation days, so I apologize, I, I didn't, he didn't leave anything, so I'll have to get, get it to you the next time.
Okay, uh, we'll just put it out there for the next three, four? Three, four? Thank you. Alright, uh, no other unfinished business. Uh, no committee reports, I'll make a motion for adjournment, a second?
Aye.
All of them in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Alright, I'll follow the order, the Public Safety Committee to the February eighteenth. Uh, let the record show, all, all the persons are present except, uh, Panis and Forney. Uh, approve the minutes, uh, make a motion, can I get a second?
Sir.
Second by Bean, all in favor?
Aye.
Both, uh, unfinished business, we have none. Uh, new referrals for consideration, we have the Civilian Review Board Annual Report. Mayor?
Uh, you've been provided with the report that the Civilian Review Board has, uh, has issued. Uh, as you can go through it, uh, you'll see that they had a, a number of official complaints. Three to O P D and one through, yeah, community, yeah, Civilian Review Board, so they had a total of four. Number found lacking, the levy won, complaints managed correctly, uh, as supported by police cam footage and department protocol, three. So, uh, that's reported, furnished to us by the Civilian Review Board.
Okay, uh, Bean?
Bill, just can you, complaints managed correctly, so is that just a way of saying unfounded? Or unsubstantiated?
No, no, not, maybe not unsubstantiated, but the, the, uh.
The wording is confusing me.
Yeah, I guess the best way to explain it, uh, somebody may have complained that the police, uh, uh, didn't use proper protocol or they, uh, were, uh, I don't wanna use the word abuse it, but they were.
Unprofessional.
Unprofessional, and but the body cam footage showed that that was not the case.
Okay.
Okay, so, uh, and that was reviewed by, by, uh, Chief Richardson and Captain Marshville.
Okay.
They also, uh, had the Civilian Review Board review the body cam footage.
Okay.
Of the meeting, and that's the outcome that it came out as.
Okay, no, that's fine, I just wasn't questioning the, I just, the wording of it was kind of confusing.
Amy, you? McColl?
So it says a fillable form on the police department webpage entitled the Police Employee Complaint Form, and that it's paired with the other form, so thanks for attaching that, my question sent and it's good to go? Excellent.
Mary? Any other questions? Uh, I, I do have one, Mayor, I see that there was a resignation, is there a plan to fill that spot? Or we're gonna leave it at the current numbers?
There is a plan to fill that spot, I have not had anybody interested in, uh, being on the Civilian Review Board, so.
Okay.
If you know of anybody that, uh, would be interested, uh, I'll have them, uh, send it my way.
Alright, have a call.
I was gonna say, I, I didn't realize anybody resigned and if that were to occur in the, in the future, if, if we know we could get the message out and individuals could contact you, so, but yeah, we'll look to come up with some ideas to send people to you.
Alright, is there anything else on this one? Alright, by smoking, oh, I'm sorry, Anastasia, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Okay, I'll call together the Finance Committee meeting for, uh, Tuesday, February eighteenth. Let the record show that all aldermen are present with the exception of Panis and Forney. Approve of the minutes from the previous committee meeting, which was Tuesday, February fourth. And I believe that is the one I was out of town, actually, I was working for, so do I have a motion to accept the minutes?
A motion.
Okay, do I have a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, unfinished business, we have none, new referrals for consideration, um, the mayor had implemented a spending freeze, um, and a freeze on, um, purchasing, except for essentials, based on the, um, sales projection, um, that we were going to not hit for twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five there. So, Lens, do you wanna speak to, you, you gave us the information and you kinda walk us through it?
Yeah, before you, it's, um, where we are as far as sales tax and the spending freeze so far as of January thirty-first, twenty twenty-five. Um, we are at two point six billion dollars sales tax right now, and we budgeted six million. If you look at the bottom part, the left hand side of the bottom, in the last three years, we are averaging one point six million for the last three months. That would be January, no, that would be February, March, May, it's a one point six million worth for the three months, for the last three years. If you add that to where we are today, we would end up at five point two million dollars. And the shortfall would be seven oh two thousand dollars. The right hand side tells you where the spending, the projected for the spending, what we could save if we don't spend, well, if we spend for what we actually need, not what we want with it. Um, for February, for January, we saved one twenty-two, two five five point nine four. And that's, that's only one fourth of the month, because we put the spending freeze the last week of the month. Had we do it from the beginning of the month, we would probably save about four hundred and eighty-nine thousand dollars worth there. And the middle portion of it, just like little square, rectangle in the middle, says from February to May, the bottom part. I said if we average two fifty to three hundred thousand dollars a month for the next four months, we would see a saving of one million dollars. That's if we, that, I, I took the lower part of the, between the three and two and two fifteen, two hundred dollars, I put two fifty, if we do two fifty thousand each month, that was saving of one million dollars. And if you take that away, if you took away that shortfall will, will be an increase from not making sales tax of seven oh two. At the bottom, we have four hundred and nineteen thousand dollars we could potentially put into fund balance. But one thing I'd like to, the current numbers we get, was those based on projection on where, where we are and what the, the story and sales tax creates for us.
And these are, these are projections at this point, so.
Questions?
Are there? Do you have any projections on how well these last four months will do? I mean, six of those nine months previous were at zero or a decrease.
Actually, I was looking at the mayor earlier, we, we do have some good news for February compared to last February and this one, that we just, we have two more, we have one more payment coming for sales tax. We are at twenty-one percent increase from this February than we did last.
Okay, I just see, like you said, six of the nine were either a zero or a loss.
And we still have one more payment coming in, probably this week or next week.
Which would be big, I mean, isn't it, ones that did gain were what, three, seven, and?
What was it? Three, seven, and we have a twenty-one increase this.
Yeah, three and seven.
It's not on here yet, but it's for February.
Okay.
So you'll sit up next one when I, when I do the.
John?
Hey, Lens, um, I'll follow back up with you offline about this, but, um, it would be pattern you have up at, at the top here, but rather than have it compared to previous year, have it compared to what the budget, what, what we put in the budget by month, right, because at this point, what we care about is what is our delta to the, to our budget. Um, and so that might, previous year might help give you an idea of what maybe we could possibly expect, but, um, just to show us what that delta, the difference is between what the actuals that are coming in versus, uh, the budget, we have, we're able to break out the budget revenue per month, yes, the six million dollars?
Yeah.
Yeah, so maybe if we can see that, and then on the flip side, is the same thing for expenses, right, the expenditures, is what was the per, per month, the budget, and then, um, what the actuals are.
Over the last week.
Last week of January?
Yeah.
So really, we won't know until the end of February to see a solid, how much, you know, has been able to be reduced. Right, but, but that's, th- those are the two key pieces that we're gonna really need to track as we move forward. Um, and, and so really, if we could just have them even side by side, and then with a, with a, a variance um, column between them, I think that'll be really beneficial for us to just keep our eyes on. Um, I'm not gonna disagree, I, I see what you're saying. Um, but I, I think the key thing to note, so I kinda just crunched the numbers here, is we look like we're probably on track to come in maybe seven hundred, seven hundred and fifty thousand less in, in projected revenues to our budget. Um, and after we see one month of what the savings tied to austerity can be, I think that'll help tell us where, where we might be likely to land at the end of the year, okay? If that makes sense? Thanks.
Other questions?
I'm just curious, like, how do you think that we can save that much in a month and still operate the city? What are we, what are we doing that's gonna save that much money?
That's not, I'm sorry, that's not, that's for three months, not, not a month.
That's not such for three months, I thought it was.
Then one million dollars.
I thought it was per month, and then it told us, am I remiring?
No, no, I'm sorry, between two fifty and.
Three hundred per month.
If we said two fifty a month, we have four months, we should be at one million dollars.
Right, but I'm just.
How, how are we accomplishing?
How are we accomplishing that?
Two hundred and fifty thousand dollars in savings per month?
Yeah.
Great question, David, I would like to, I would like to hear that.
We are, we are being very, uh, cognizant of what this spending is, on no honest, I mean, our spending's gotta come tonight. I approve the seven dollars and forty-five cent item today, so they're not spending. The other thing we're doing is, uh, we have seven positions that are, that are open. Uh, in the city, we're not filling them, so those, those wages and benefits will not be, uh, they'll be a savings for the next, you know, months, so. There's, uh, three in the fire department, two in the police department, and, uh, two in, uh, D P W.
And, yeah, I, I heard the rumors about the fire department, but, um, the fire department, to the last I knew, is, I don't know what their staffing levels are, but, uh, they're, they're, they have an eight man minimum per shift according to their contract, correct? It's, it reduces them, so do we have seven that fill each shift, or is it being done by overtime?
Uh, overtime's gonna go up, yes, but, uh, that's, uh, they haven't, uh, that'll, that should stay within their, their existing overtime budget, so. Current budget and the, uh, existing, uh, our existing budget.
It's cheaper to pay overtime than we do.
Right.
John?
Um, I just, you know, obviously, uh, we have some moving targets here, uh, but I did wanna just preface with a, a heads up that, uh, the Audit and Compliance, um, Committee met, at least, uh, the aldermen on the Audit and Compliance Day, and will be bringing forward, uh, suggested policy improvement um, to, to help with us, uh, as we move forward when we're projecting sales tax revenue. I know this is something that, you know, we've all, uh, watched carefully over the last couple of years, and everything is continuous improvement, looking for ways to improve our strategy going forward, and, uh, and so, um, in the next few weeks, we'll be bringing that forward, uh, for everyone's consideration and feedback.
Sonya? Bill, I know you've sent out the email today about waiting on a salt shipment, have you guys, are you guys been in a price increase with that, or are they still?
No, we're still within our, our contracted price.
Okay.
Yeah, we get, uh, it's a hundred and twenty percent of what you contract for, so, uh, with this last shipment, we are within our allotment. Uh, so we look at the, basically look at the price that.
The base rate that was really, okay, I know on the private side, it went up exponentially, like a hundred and forty a ton.
And if we have to get, go over our limit, it's gonna go up, so.
Okay.
Do you know how close we are to our limit, Mayor? Uh, we have enough funds to, uh, get the six hundred ton that, uh, that, uh, we just ordered.
Okay.
Okay, and that'll, that'll take, uh, I, I think we're, I think we're a little, we're over, actually, we're all over in the budget, but, uh, we'll, uh, hopefully find another line, you know, there, we can, we're about, uh, we're about twenty-five, thirty thousand, that was over.
Well, that's.
March, so, yeah.
Okay.
So, but I, uh, in my email to you today, they are, you know, they're, you're gonna get some complaints because, uh, they're, they're, they're being, uh, real stingy right now with what we're using out there, and, uh, hopefully we'll get a break here soon, so.
Well, I don't just think it's Oleen being stingy, I was all over the roads, all over Catragus County and Allegheny County, um, the last few days, and, uh, if people think our roads aren't clouded well, they just simply need to go to like Catragus, Little Valley, Conawango Road, Route sixty-two.
I don't have, I'm just getting it to get solved.
Yeah.
Well, if you, uh, if you follow the, the news of the, you know, that Erie County's been experiencing this shortage uh, for the last month or so, and they resorted to, uh, just sanding intersections, the main roads and and that, and not all your side streets and that, so, right now, uh, as you read, we're gonna keep doing, we'll be a little stingy with it, but we may have to go down to just doing the, the main roads and the school routes and, and, uh, and some of the intersections, so.
So thank you for the work, and I, I concur with, with John that it would be helpful to get a, a different view, um, to be able to see kind of the, uh, monthly where, where we're at. Um, anything else on this and the sales tax projection?
Um, Sonya, just going forward, I know something we've talked about, uh, over the, the many years is that we should, we should have this sort of just scheduled in the agenda, uh, on a monthly basis. Alright, so as we, as we go forward, um, once we get kind of a view, we, we should, and I, and I, and I'm happy to work with the mayor and Lens, we should, you know, be working on not only where, what, what are the current variances, which we all get, but we should do it in an open session like this, rather than just try, try to. but we should do it in an open session like this, rather than just try, try to forecast where we're gonna land at the, the end of the, the year. Um, I know that's something that the previous auditor and I used to go around and round about, and, uh, every organization I ever worked at, we were able to forecast, you know, and no, it's, it's looking in a crystal, it's not looking in a crystal ball, it's, you're, you're, you're doing the best you can, taking into account everything, so you're not gonna land perfectly. But, you know, Fred used to always say, well, you can't forecast, it's unpredictable.
Well, you can.
I mean, but that's the whole point of controlling, right? And, uh, and so I think we have a lot of opportunity here to try to make things, uh, better and more transparent, and, um, so maybe we can try to work together to, to make that happen. Thanks.
So I guess I, I would say, as I think everybody knows, we're, we're into budget season. Um, and I, I thank you, Mayor, 'cause I think you had note, had put some information in regarding, you know, we're, we're always looking to say, you know, where can we be more efficient? So in the letter, I, I saw that you worked to, to do some of that, because the finch is, see, is we're not getting more money for the most part. So then we have to say, how do we work with what we have and, and be more efficient, um, which is tough sometimes. So I appreciate the work, and I guess we will need to get together to set up a schedule for budget meetings. And, uh, we can do that and, um, get those set up so that we can get started, so that we're not at the eleventh hour, um, running in to try to get everything tied up, so. Any other questions, anything else? Um, so we should have, by, by next week, I'd like to have kind of our schedule for budget, um, put together. Um, and then we'll kind of go over, I think the format we used last year went much smoother than the first year I did it, so, um, we can talk about that then.
One, Sonya, one last thing that was, uh, requested, uh, from a handful of aldermen, and I don't recall if I sent the request formally forward, uh, to the mayor and, and the rest of the team, all, all of us, is, you know, once we get into the budget season, I think we need to be cognizant of the PLs that we bring forward, if they are mission critical, or if they are just things that, you know, whether there's stop signs or things that could potentially wait till after the budget season, uh, because I know, you know, we were here pretty late a lot of times last, last, uh, time around. So, um, I think if we could just all try to be cognizant of that, and, uh, you know, maybe we just take one night out of the, one Tuesday out of the, the month and, and talk about PLs that need, so let's, let's put all of our focus in that, and because after a certain hour, some aldermen get crankier than others, and.
Oh, John, you're talking about yourself, I see now.
Give the number of prepared statements to him, maybe?
Just bring us some pizza and a celebrity account.
If you guys could.
I bring snacks.
Yeah, if you just let me know if you wanna do, uh, Tuesdays, Thursdays, again, like we did, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursdays, you know, let me know so we can get something together.
I'll, I'll poll everybody, but I think Tuesday, Thursdays worked really well. So. Okay, committee reports, we have none. I'll make a motion to adjourn. Do we have a second?
Sir?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right.